This program is brought to you by Cable Franchise V's and generous donations from viewers like you.
So I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Regional School Committee. And move that we enter immediately into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collect. Actually, do I need to take roll call first? Yes, I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Regional School Committee. And before I make that motion, I will ask everybody to state their presence and that they can hear us. Mr. Demling.
Yes, I'm present.
Ms. Kenny.
Kenny, present.
Ms. Lord.
Lord, present.
Ms. Seeger.
Ms. Seeger, present.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer, present.
Ms. Stanser.
Stanser, present.
Mr. Sullivan.
Sullivan, present.
And McDonald, present. Thank you. And now I will move that we enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation of APEA and AFSCME if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body. And the chair so declares, and I declare, with intention of returning to open session. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by McDonald and seconded by Spitzer, and we will take a roll call vote. Mr. Demling.
Our Demling, aye.
Ms. Kenny.
Kenny, aye.
Ms. Lord.
Lord, aye.
Ms. Seeger.
Seeger, aye.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer, aye.
Ms. Stanser.
Stanser, aye.
Mr. Sullivan.
Sullivan, aye.
And McDonald, aye. And we will now move into executive session. Okay, great, thank you. So we will move to public comment. I have one voice message and a document, so I'll play the voice message first while I get the document ready.
Hello, this is Stephanie Kaufman, Appalen resident and parent of an eighth grader and ninth grader. This is a public comment for tonight's October 6th School Committee meeting. Dr. Morris, the school committee, are you listening to parents and students? See through the frustration many are facing currently due to lack of in-person instruction. Are you listening? It seems that the desires expressed by caregivers, parents and students are being ignored. Most people want a choice. They want the freedom to choose in-person instruction, but the administration, the APEA and the school committee has taken away our freedom of choice. If prior school committee meetings were hours of public comment for the return to school are any indication, it's as if we're negotiating in a soundproof room without considering the desires of choice that people are expressing. You are elected and hired to your position so that you represent students and caregivers, not just teachers. Prior surveys and the many articles in various news outlets demonstrate that the overwhelming majority of families and students want the choice to have in-person education now, not November, not February, now. I'm asking that you find the courage to allow caregiver's parents and students the freedom to choose. Our community will be facing the threat of COVID for many months, if not years, in the future. You are setting the stage that fear, not facts and science dictate actions. Many other schools in Massachusetts, Connecticut, New York, and around the world where COVID is more prevalent have in-person education. Why not Amherst? Why are we fearing to provide the best education that our children deserve? There are proven plans seen in other cities and other less advanced countries on how to safely reopen in-person education with social distancing, masks and testing. We have these resources and maybe it should be used now. Don't allow fear to dictate the future for our students. Don't let fear of retribution and future APEA negotiations keep the school committee and administration from doing what is best for families and students. Have courage to provide equality for all students and be the leaders you were elected and hired to be. Have courage to provide the freedom of choice to our students now. As Franklin D. Roosevelt said, courage is not the absence of fear, but rather the judgment that something else is more important than one's fears. Our kids' futures, their education, their mental health and their socialization are more important than the fear of transmission of COVID that happens even in our schools where there are no children. Unless we're all going to sequester 24/7 and not allow resources from the outside world into our home, transmission risk exists. It cannot be avoided anytime soon. However, we have the power to know the fact, know the risks and take actions to minimize risk. We just need to have you have the courage to move forward and give families and students the freedom to choose in-person education.
Sorry that it gave me an error when I tried. Are you seeing the public comment? Great, so we are now moving on to our next item of business, which we're. There was an item number three that is non-existent, so we're moving to item number four. To, we're going to be looking at and voting on the memorandum of agreement with APEA. Mr. Demling.
So as this discussion and vote is on a document that includes items with direct financial benefit to APEA members, and my wife is a current APEA member, I need to recuse myself from this item in order to avoid a conflict of interest. And so I will now fully disconnect from the meeting and will await the chair's notification to return. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Demling. Ms. Stanser.
I also am recusing myself from this discussion because I have a family member who's a member of the APEA. And I am leaving the meeting.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Lord or Ms. Kenny, would you like to introduce this topic? Or Dr. Morris? All right, as members of our negotiating team, that's why.
Yeah, I mean. Hala, were you gonna jump in?
I wasn't 100% sure about the wording. I'm just introducing our MOA that has been accepted by the APEA. Yes, Dr. Morris.
Sure, yeah, sorry, it's been, should've jumped in sooner. So yeah, there's a tentative agreement between the APEA and the school committees on memorandum of agreement for this, only for this year and this COVID time period. And so that is what the school committee is considering and potentially voting on tonight is fully adopting, whether to fully adopt the tentative agreement that's already been. That's already occurred between the school committee and the APEA. Sorry, not artfully said.
And I think, I didn't hear this, maybe I was not paying close attention, but this agreement was voted on by the APEA membership and was ratified by 92% of the responding members. Any? Questions or comments before we move to our own vote? Ms. Spitzer.
So I just want to start off by expressing my gratitude to Ms. Lord, Ms. Kenny, all the administrative staff members who were part of these negotiations. And also I know Mr. Harrington, who's not here, was sometimes called in to serve. And just say also my gratitude to everybody, all the members of the APEA who met. I mean, we've been working on this for, I'm not sure how long, but it's been weeks, if not months now that we've been working and I think. Both sides probably have items in here that they would have liked to see differently. And I know that the public's certainly going to have items that they would like to see different as well. But I just want to start off by expressing my gratitude because this does reflect a lot of work. And I'm happy that we've been able to put together something that can be agreed upon by the union. And hopefully, we'll see by the committee.
I think I'll jump into sort of plus one is Ms. Spitzer's comments. This eternal gratefulness for Ms. Lord and Ms. Kenny in particular, but the entire bargaining team, as well as the bargaining team from APEA. This was, this was not, I think going into it, we all knew it wasn't going to be easy. And I think it proved to be really challenging, difficult conversations. And as Ms. Spitzer pointed out. Difficult things and agreements to come to, but I think in the end, you know, while there's, there might be pieces that we might be less than happy with. I think, you know, the group really stuck at it and stuck to it to get us to a point of agreement and work together. And I think for that, I am grateful. And I think through it all, you both have mentioned that we've heard repeatedly about the collaborative relationship that you've built up through, through the countless hours and hard work and difficult conversations. And that's going to be really important for carrying us forward into, into the new school year. I think as. The president of APEA in sending over notice about their, their vote said, you know, this is going to be a challenging year. And so I think the work that you all put into building that relationship is going to really help us navigate through what's going to be continuing to be difficult discussions. So thank you very, very much. Any other comments before we move to a vote? Okay. Well, I'll make the motion. I move, I move that we approve the member random of agreement that has been agreed with the APEA Union and ratified by the APEA Union. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by McDonald and seconded by Spitzer. Is there any further discussion before we vote? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote. Ms. Kenny.
Kenny, aye.
Ms. Lord.
Lord, aye.
Ms. Seeger.
Seeger, aye.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer, aye.
Mr. Sullivan.
Sullivan, no.
And McDonald, aye. The motion passes five, one. And three absent. Thank you, everybody. And so we're moving on to the next item of business. We had a, on our agenda, I will text and email our fellow members to rejoin us. And while they're making their way back into the meeting room, I will say. The item number five, we do not have that final, that final agreement with AFSCME. So we are tabling that item and we'll come back to that at a future meeting. Expected to be next week. So, I'm gonna look, I don't see Ms. Stanser back yet. But we can move, we'll move into our next item, which is, there she is. Welcome back, both of you. We're going to move to permission to negotiate with transportation contractor and vote with Five Star. Dr. Morris?
Yep, so similar to last year, during our period of closure, we renegotiated with our bus contract vendor, last year's vendors, now it's just one vendor. An adjusted contract, given that the buses aren't rolling. And so Dr. Slaughter has been working on that. And we just would ask your permission for him to complete that task. It would certainly come back to the committee for a formal vote because it is, it is a contract that we'd have, but just to make sure that the committee is comfortable with us trying to. We've had those conversations now that the closure is going longer. We wanna sort of, we have a good relationship with Five Star. None of this is contentious, frankly. But we want to just make sure the committee is comfortable with Dr. Slaughter finishing those negotiations and bring back something to you probably as soon as next week. With that, if there is a school member who wants to be involved in those negotiations, that's fine. And they can be appointed to a committee, but in the past, it seems like the committee's been comfortable with Dr. Slaughter taking that up. And I just want to bring something back to the committee. So just wanted to confirm that the committee is comfortable with that. Or if there, there's a member who wants to dedicate the time in next week to work with Dr. Slaughter, finish that up, we're certainly open to that as well, but in the past, that has not been the case.
Any thoughts, comments, questions from the committee? Do we need to vote on that, Dr. Morris, or?
I don't think there probably formally needs to be a vote as long as there's genuine consent by the committee for Dr. Slaughter to continue to do that. I think as long as, you know, we just didn't want to like, you know, not have a public discussion about.
Yep.
We're going forward without a school member involved in the front end, but certainly we'll come back to you all in the backend.
Okay.
I'm seeing lots of thumbs up.
Really good at body language and I'm seeing a lot of. Body language that suggests the committee is on board with this. Okay, great, so, Mr. Sullivan.
Yeah, I just want to speak a tiny bit. I haven't mentioned this before, but I've been thinking about it a lot since Chutesbury and Leverett lost that separate bus company, that I think they'll, the possibility of late start is a lot better happening now with one company because then they don't just need to rely on those, those same drivers do bus both routes. Hopefully, they can send different drivers for elementary and different driver, make shorter and longer routes.
Oh, you got me.
Late start wouldn't be an issue as it was with two companies.
And that's something we could certainly engage Five Star in if that's the will of the committee, you know, as, as that becomes a topic later throughout the year.
Ms. Seeger.
I know between Amherst and Leverett and Chutesbury as well, the, this particular negotiation would cover the elementary school bus routes as well, is that true?
Yes and no. So the reason I'm hedging a little bit is that that's typically the way it works, but we may not have the same start dates. We didn't originally and we don't currently have the same in-person start date. So, I mean, it would cover it, but it might not cover it the same way because the in-person start date in, in those three districts might not be the same date. So that's why, that's what I was trying to say, like, sort of, you know, it does cover those, but it's a broader question of how long all remote stays for the different districts. And they might have different implications because of that.
Go ahead.
Just to follow up to that, I'm curious how often the financial director from Union 28 is involved in negotiations as well, since it does impact us as a, as a Leverett district somewhat separately from the region.
Yeah, so I think last year I could speak to it a little better than I can this fall, but last year there was a lot of communication going on there. And I assume the same is, is true this year, but I actually can't speak specifically to that. I am hoping to speak to Superintendent Colkeen later this week to try to, on a number of issues, but some of that is around coordinating things like you mentioned.
Any other questions, thoughts? No? Okay. Great, so we can move on to our joint committee topics. And I'll let the Pelham Chair know that we are moving on.
Chairman Todd, can I ask you a agenda question?
Yes.
Was there a posting issue with one of the later items, the UMass letter, that made it not possible for it to be a joint item and therefore we might move it around?
Yes, sorry. Thank you. So the, the agenda that we are looking at in our packets right now was posted in Amherstun region, but not in Pelham. And the change is item 14D. We will not address it there. We will address that after, we will move the adjournment of the Pelham School Committee up to item 17. And then discuss the letter to UMass Amherst at that point, after the Pelham Committee has adjourned. Because that will be a region and Amherst only topic for tonight. Thank you for reminding me that. Okay, so while we're, our Pelham friends are joining us. I'll call to order the meeting of the Amherst School Committee at 8:06 PM Tuesday, October 6. So I will take a roll call attendance. Mr. Demling.
Demling, present.
Ms. Lord.
Lord, present.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer, present.
And McDonald, present. We are in meeting. Ms. Hall.
All right, seeing the presence of a quorum, I'll call to order this meeting of the Pelham School Committee and start with roll call attendance. Ms. Kenny.
Kenny, present.
Mr. Manino. You're on mute. Oh, and you're gone. Fleeting presence. All right, well, we'll give him a minute. Ms. Dancer.
Dancer, present.
And Hall, present. And I know that Ms. Barlow can't attend tonight and I'm sure that Mr. Manino will be back. Thanks.
And I'll mention that Mr. Harrington is also from Amherst is not able to attend tonight. Our next order of business is to approve minutes of September 22. And any edits? Ms. Dancer. Ms. Dancer.
I have a question under C, private virtual, virtual private school application. In the second sentence, the school committee has a liability for what the private school does. Is that correct?
No. That should be has no liability. Yep.
All right.
So staying on that same one, I had further down in that same paragraph. It's a Dr. Morris said, private schools benefit our community through financial benefits. And I think that's also incorrect. I'm not sure exactly.
Manino, present.
And I think we said that the private schools benefit our community. But the impact, and I'm not, I actually don't remember exactly what you said, Dr. Morris. Do you remember?
I don't quite remember saying, I think it was maybe a comparison to the financial impact that charter schools have. I think that's what I was trying to say. So I, you know, I think the intention was, and I don't remember my exact words, was to say something like, private schools do not have the same negative impact on district finances that, that charter schools have.
Yeah, that's what I.
Maybe if, yeah, so if that could be corrected, thank you for picking that up.
In the item right above that, the item B, that should be, we did not vote on the UFCW. Oh, sorry, we only, we only voted on UFCW. And we did not vote on A F S C M E. And it should read the Regional School Committee, not the Amherst School Committee.
Ms. Hall.
This was not a Pelham meeting, so I was not there and the other Pelham only folks were not there.
Yes. So Ms. Barlow, Ms. Hall and Mr. Manino were not there.
Right, yep.
Okay. They also had under, under item five, Fall Update. Dr. Morris said that we had a wonderful virtual event. I think that's the kind of referencing convocation and not to stimulate fall. So wonderful virtual event. On the virtual event, I can just end it there. And the, on the bottom line, the Arms Educator Award was given out. And then at the top of the next page, CPAC should be S E P A C on that line and then also in the email address. Dr. Morris.
And I had one on page one, the voice messages Rebecca Claus. The last name is spelled instead of a C, the first letter is a K and her last name, she's a staff member.
And I believe at the top of the next page, it's not Anita, I think that was Alicia. A L I C I A.
Yep, that's a good catch. Thank you.
Any other edits? Seeing none. Would somebody from the region like to make a motion? I'll move to approve the minutes for the Regional School Committee meeting of September 22 as amended. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by McDonald, second by Seeger. We have to take a roll call vote. Mr. Demling.
Demling, aye.
Ms. Kenny.
Kenny, aye.
Ms. Lord.
Lord, aye.
Ms. Seeger.
Seeger, aye.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer, aye.
Ms. Dancer.
Dancer, aye.
Dr. Sullivan.
Sullivan, aye.
And McDonald, aye. Motion passes eight, zero. Would somebody from Amherst like to make a motion? Mr. Demling.
Move to approve the minutes of September 22 for the Amherst School Committee.
Second.
Moved by Demling, second by Spitzer, and a roll call vote. Mr. Demling.
Demling, aye.
Ms. Lord.
Lord, aye.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer, aye.
And McDonald, aye. The motion passes four to zero. Thank you. So now we have a couple of comments for the, in public comment. And I will try to share my screen again. Oops, sorry, fix that. Are you seeing my screen?
Yes, we are.
Okay, thank you. Oops, I thought I had more. That's the only one. Okay. So moving on, we have the superintendent's update. Dr. Morris.
Sure. Obviously, lots of things going on, so I'll try to sequence it correctly. I'll start with we think about last week. One of the bright spots over the last week, week and a half, has been athletics starting. I want to really publicly thank our coaches and student athletes for their participation. I've gotten a number of phone calls and emails from families who are suggesting that students who have been involved in in sports, even the fact, the fact that they're practicing, has been really well received by students, even if the conditions by which their sports are being played are substantially different and cumbersome. The fact that they're having that social relationships and opportunities are really well appreciated. And similarly, I want to thank John Becktold and our drama program because we also are having outdoor experiences available for students in that domain as well. When I acknowledge, not every student is a secondary student, not every student has those opportunities. But those who are revealing themselves of it are finding great meaning and value in doing those. And I think the kind of different, the many coaches and staff members who are contributing to that because we know the impact it's having on our students. And our volleyball team won their first game, which is awesome. So well done to our volleyball team. I think soccer was this afternoon or tomorrow afternoon, I can't remember, was the first game today. And so, you know, I just want to thank, thanks folks for that. For the younger students, we did partner with a organization. We rented our, one of the fields at Fort River and had a free clinic last Wednesday. Hopefully, the weather holds out for tomorrow. Not sure, sure about that tomorrow afternoon. But again, there were thirty, thirty, thirty-two students who participated at the elementary level in grades K to two and the three to six clinics start a week from tomorrow. So I think these opportunities for folks to, for kids and to be seeing each other and being involved outdoors and positive experiences is huge. So I really want to thank everyone who's made those opportunities possible. We will have a survey going out by the end of the week, once it's translated on distance learning, to try to get a sense three, three and a half weeks in on how it's going. We will have a follow-up survey probably the week after on social emotional health. Using depth in a norm, a kind of evidence-based tool from, I believe, Ohio that's been used other places to try to assess that because we know that there are concerns on both those dimensions. And we're trying to get a good sense on both surveys. We'll put them out for secondary students, pre-K to twelve staff and pre-K to twelve families so that we can triangulate our data and understand how people are experiencing things this fall. We'll obviously release all the qualitative data back with the committee and all the qualitative data that's not personally identifiable as well with the committee and the public as we have and since this all started. Couple other notes before I sort of go over the day-by-day sketch of the last week or so as it relates to health and and safety and in-person schooling. One cause of concern that we'll certainly come back to over the course of this year is the financial implications of a declining enrollment, more than we would have expected this year. At the current time, our high school enrollment is eight hundred eighty-six students. That's a more significant drop-off than we would have expected. We're seeing more limited enrollments or fewer enrollments at the elementary and middle school level as well. Trying to figure out what what contributes to that. We do have an increase in homeschooling, but actually not as dramatic as some other districts have experienced. It's gone up about forty percent. Our homeschooling numbers, you know, some of our neighboring districts have actually been tripled, the number of homeschooling students in their district. So I think relatively par for the course, if not lower here, but that does have implications. And by the way, there's no critique at all on families for making whatever choices they're making. That's not where, I want to be really clear about that. Everyone's making the best decision in their interest of their child. But you all are, as well as I am, a financial steward of the the communities and and that will have an implication. It's too early, we don't get the home, the, we get a data report in the winter about private school enrollments. And, you know, anecdotally, those seem like they've went up, but we'll get more clarity as we get the school attending report, as we head towards the winter, probably about two months away from getting that report, which then identifies where all the students are. You know, the upside is our class sizes are low and that's been great for a virtual environment. But I do, as we're heading towards an uncertain fiscal future, Chapter Seventy is currently based, you know, next year's, wouldn't affect this year, but FY twenty-two is generally based on the October one counts, attendance counts or enrollment, excuse me, numbers. And our enrollment numbers are lower than we would have anticipated going into this year. So I do want to hew everyone to that because when we start talking about budget, which, you know, sadly, isn't that far away. You all experienced this, have been on the committee, is once you finish a budget, you get a couple of months and usually it's quieter, this year obviously not, and then you're back in budget. And we are already getting into, you know, some of those initial conversations. But, you know, it is concerning about our enrollment numbers and the implications it will have on our budget. I can pause, I see there's a question.
Mr. Manino.
What is the decrease? How many students this year? How, how many students the year before?
I can have that for you at the next meeting. You know, we're, the October first was just last week and it was a big, busy week. So I apologize for not having all of that, but I just thought the high school, to be under nine hundred students is is a bellwether. I think the other concern from a financial situation that's more acute in Pelham, but certainly true across the districts, but way more, significantly more acute in Pelham, is the loss in school choice. You know, it was hard to attract school choice students anywhere in this context last spring and over the summer when no one knew what schooling was going to look like. As Pelham is directly dependent on school choice, it is something that is a major source of concern financially. We built our budget on some assumptions about school choice. I can tell you definitively, in Pelham, we have not met the, the number of school choice students that we'd, we would anticipate. All that's understandable, there's no critique there. And I don't, it's not because of anything anyone did, it's the nature of living in a pandemic and what, what are people going to choose to do? And we did get a new Pelham school choice student right before the school year started in mid-September. So it's not that it didn't happen, there weren't efforts made, but that will have significant financial implications. So I think when we get towards the end of this month, it may make sense to separate out for Pelham because there, that is a really acute, specific issue for Pelham. That's not just about the number of students enrolled, but it's actually, you know, more about this continual conversation that we have in Pelham about the sustainability of the school, independency on school choice and what happens if. And I think we're in that what happens if category at this point. Sorry to be a downer, but I, I'd rather you all know this on October sixth than be surprised two weeks from now or next month when we start talking more seriously about budget.
Mr. Manino.
On the school choice initiative, has there been anything done in the legislature about the new rule for school choice students being able to automatically go on to the middle school or not? Or is that dead because they're too busy doing other things?
What I can tell you is that nothing's been done, you know, whether that's because of where the priorities shifted in terms of the pandemic or not, it's hard for me to answer. But I, I actually think in this particular context that it has lower weight in parent guardian caretaker decision-making than it would in a typical year. The idea of thinking four, five, six years ahead is probably not in anyone's wheelhouse right now. But but to my knowledge, that no actions have been taken on that.
Thank you.
Ms. Spitzer. I think you mentioned all the factors except for charter school enrollment. And I know those numbers often aren't finalized till later, but do you do have any initial direction on those?
I do not. Yeah. All right, moving on to last week. So last week was a very difficult week, I want to acknowledge that. It is incredibly difficult for staff, students and families. We were anticipating an in-person return on October first and it done collectively a tremendous amount of work to prepare for that. And we started seeing an uptick in UMass cases, as you all know, at the beginning of the week. As of Tuesday evening, when we were all here, I think you heard me very clearly state that I was comfortable moving forward with school. And then woke up Wednesday to texts and phone calls from both UMass. And I appreciate their communication as well as the Amherst Health Department. as well as the Amherst Health Department, that the numbers had gone up, they had more than doubled overnight. At that point, we had not triggered our metrics, but I didn't feel very good with knowing, I guess, not knowing certain details. Was their community spread? What was the trajectory of this going to look like over the next couple of days? It made me concerned. So I want to be really clear that I made the decision on Wednesday to not have school for the rest of the week, to give us time to gather more information. That was not triggered by any contractual obligation, anything of that variety. So I know that was a really, it was a decision I didn't take lightly, but it was the level of uncertainty in the UMass dashboard versus the town dashboard versus the state dashboard. I didn't feel like I was able to get enough clear information for me to know exactly what was happening on the ground. It's not because people weren't communicating with me. It's that there are different systems and different reporting mechanisms, and seeing that rapid a jump from Tuesday to Wednesday caused me great concern. It was, I want to publicly state that, you know, I've said it many times before, I'm going to keep on saying it, that for many students, an in-person return was going to be a return to board learning. You know, that just very bluntly, that for certain students, especially our high need students, special populations, and our youngest students, it's hard to simulate in-person learning with the outcomes that we'd want for all students, and particularly for students who are more typically disadvantaged in our society, as well as our schools. So it was not something I took lightly or take lightly now. It's incredibly sad. The number of families who told me this is, a couple families said, this is the first time I cried in front of my kids, you know, because people knew what the implications were. You know, it's incredibly frustrating, and you know, not to be, make fun of it, but how twenty, 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 how twenty twenty is it that the day before students are going to return, that this, we see this rapid spike? So that happened Wednesday. On Thursday morning, we were informed at pretty early in the morning that a staff member at Fort River had tested positive. She self-reported that tested positive for COVID. We, that went through our protocol of contract tracing, notification of close contacts, notification of the entire community. Principal Chamberlain, Nurse Manager Constantino, and I facilitated a meeting for Fort River staff members at eleven thirty that morning to go over what we knew, what we didn't know, and to offer advice and as well as support for faculty members, staff members who are feeling concerned about the information. Some of our protocols were the rooms that that staff member was in earlier in the week were completely closed off with our, and sanitized in the way that we talked about in the summer with the electrostatic sprayers, which happened to be at Fort River, so that made things a little easier, and notification to, again, the larger community. Since that time, we'll try to get some communication out tomorrow. What we've learned is that none of the close contacts, I mean, those who have shared with us their testing results, all had, all had negative results. We don't have any indication that there are other positive tests coming from the Fort River community. And just appreciate the quick nature which Fort River community, Fort River staff members in particular, responded with that with good questions. And, you know, for some, that meant quarantining, for some, that meant a precautionary test, for some, that just meant being really anxious. And, you know, I understand that. I was in the building Tuesday and went afternoon and Wednesday afternoon, and I get how that feeling was, and it was really hard. I want to compliment the staff member for immediately contacting the principal of the school, so that all those things could, could take place in a timely manner. We were able to contact all the close contacts, and people needed to be quarantined before they came to work on Thursday morning, because many of them were, were working from the building, or at least potentially could be working from the building on Thursday morning. And I did talk to the staff member on Thursday night with the positive test, and just complimented her for everything that she did and all her reporting. And, you know, in a stressful situation, her ability to remember where she was seated and who she had contact with was incredibly helpful. So I want to be really clear that we want to appreciate that, and that's the kind of communication we'd look for. We did have an after-action review on Friday that Assistant Superintendent Cunningham facilitated, which was incredibly helpful, just how did our protocols work? And what did we learn from this? And what we did, what worked well, and what would we do differently? And I just want to thank Doreen, who's always thinking ahead of how do we get better? You know, it's, it's, it's good, lots of good things, lots of good processes played out, and we've learned a lot that we can continue to improve on in the future. So that was Thursday morning. Thursday afternoon, the metrics in our tentative agreement were hit. Our typical agreement with the APEA is that we review them, we would review them every Friday. Given that I knew they were hit and had information from UMass, they were likely to rise in the next day or two after that. I chose to just announce that Thursday afternoon, instead of kept, keep people waiting till our typical process would be, excuse me, which would be to let people know on a Friday afternoon, so that they could plan ahead, you know, before a Monday. But since the students weren't coming in, that Thursday or Friday, it felt better not to make folks wait. On Monday, yesterday, the town and I had a conference call with Massachusetts Health and Human Services Secretary Sutter's and her team. That was a generative call to understand more from her perspective, as well as her team's perspective, about our local context, the situation in Amherst. At this point, it feels good knowing that the vast, vast, vast majority of positive cases in the community are coming from folks to the UMass campus. I'm not minimizing that, but when we think about community spread, and what I heard about from physician on the call, as well as other public health experts, is, you know, their defining community spread is, is it getting to the larger non-UMass community or non-university community? And at this point, the data is incredibly promising on that. And that's a really good thing, and that's something that we weren't sure of Wednesday, Thursday, we were making those decisions. We didn't have clarity on that, full clarity. And at this point, we have some positive data, by positive, I mean, showing that the, this, kind of while the spread did occur among UMass, primarily UMass off-campus students, it does not seem to have affected people not in that category, but who live in Amherst, in any appreciable amount. The Amherst community at large remains a low-risk community, if you pull those numbers out. And, you know, that wasn't necessarily going to be the case, but we now have more clarity on that, and thanking Jen Brown over in the Amherst Health Department for, for working on that. So I think our communication has been really good from, from all sources, as we gather more information, and as we continue to fine-tune how the town, the university, and the schools communicate with one another in this time period. That's been really helpful. We did publish last Thursday, our earliest return back to school date would be the fifteenth of October. And, you know, the last two days have been very positive in Hampshire County. We, hopefully, that number continues to be a positive, low number moving forward. So it's, it's been, it's been a busy week since we were last together, and I just want to thank the patience of everyone involved. This isn't easy for anyone. It's not easy for families and caregivers, not easy for students. I felt very sad on Wednesday afternoon. Probably the hardest moment was going over to the schools. I see your hand run. Just let me finish this one quick anecdote. I went over on Wednesday afternoon, spent the afternoon with, I got to almost all the schools that were slated to have in-person returns. And just wanted to thank the staff members, because they'd been doing hours and hours and hours of work. And I saw it. I was there with them on Tuesday afternoon. I checked in with a number of people with last-minute, you know, kind of things, like, you know, working on dismissal plans and what-if scenarios, and racking people, racking all the different things that could occur. And then for the last minute, for the rug to be pulled from them with this data, was incredibly hard, and, you know, saw tears among staff members who were excited to see their students. And so I want to publicly say what I said privately then, which is thank the staff members who are doing all this incredibly detailed, thoughtful work. You know, I think a couple of people told me how much, you know, while it's going well overall, how much they dislike talking to young students on the computer, and wanted to see them in person, and had done kindergarten orientations, and all those kind of things. And I just want to, you know, just sort of apologize, not sort of, I want to apologize to everyone involved, and really just appreciate the work of staff members who've done a tremendous amount of work to get ready for the first day in person, to have it not, you know, be in the afternoon, the more, the afternoon of, to get that information was incredibly difficult. And so, thank you all, and I apologize.
So I saw two hands up. Let's start with Mr. Manino and then Mr. Demling.
I'm not sure you can answer this question, but how many UMass cases would need to occur for us to trigger the continuation of distance learning? I mean, would it be ten or twenty cases to make that two-week average unacceptable?
So it's a county-wide, actually, it's three counties, that of a primarily Hampshire County is the data source that would trigger that. I will say that in the last week, the majority of cases in Hampshire County have come from the UMass campus. So the UMass piece isn't so much about the impact on the town. It's much more about the impact on the countywide data. And so it's hard to predict how many UMass cases, because it depends how many cases there are in East Hampton or North Hampton, which North Hampton had like zero last week. So like, you know, I mean, I, I, there, I think maybe all week. So I do think it sort of, it depends what happens elsewhere in the county, but at this time, at least last week, the majority of cases that triggered that were from the people connected to UMass.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Demling?
Yeah, so thank you for the update. So I have a few questions relating to this now-approved new metric that automatically shuts down our schools for two weeks. And so now that the agreement's been approved by both parties, and allowing you to speak to it more openly. So on August thirteenth, you gave our committee a pretty thorough presentation with evidence and reasoning as to why seventy new cases per hundred thousand is the appropriate metric to trigger automatic school closure. And you emphasized at the time that it was the most conservative threshold being used or recommended anywhere in the state. I believe that threshold that's the most conservative in the state is now fifty-six, by the way, from other schools. Yeah, so as a result of the agreement that was just passed earlier in the meeting, that's now twenty-eight, and twenty-eight being less than seventy, it obviously makes it more likely that we'll have additional two-week automatic school closures in the future. So is, now that the agreement's public, is there a rationale, evidence, reasoning that you can share as to why it's advisable for this threshold to now be twenty-eight? And if so, what is that rationale?
Sure. So, I'm sorry, my Wi-Fi is cutting in and out, but I think I got the gist of your question. So I don't feel differently than I did on August thirteenth about the advice that I've received from public health folks. I mean, if someone asked me about athletics, which actually, not so long, we'll be talking about winter athletics, you know, and other activities going on, that is the, the most conservative public health guidance that we've, that I've seen from public health agency. And I think, you know, I think it was referenced before in the meeting in a different context, in the region-only meeting, that when you go into negotiations, it's negotiations, and I think that's how that number was achieved, that is, that there's give and take in the negotiation process. But if you're asking me, which I'm not sure you are, but I'll say it this way, do I feel differently about what, what I feel comfortable with in terms of metrics? Has something changed for me between August thirteenth and now? The answer's no. And that's not a critique of negotiating teams on either side. It's not a critique of the, the agree, not tentative agreement, now the full, fully ratified agreement by both parties, but, you know, spoken to other health, human service folks, and, you know, that, that's where my comfort level is, based on what I've heard from epidemiologists, you know, at multiple institutions. So I don't know if that answers your question, but it's, I don't feel, nothing's changed for me in terms of my comfort level.
Mr. Demling?
So the other experience that I had in the last week, and I also heard from a number of parents members, the public, was just that the, so on the one hand, Dr. Morris, I feel like your communication was, was very proactive, and I appreciated the multiple emails. That being said, it was pretty confusing in terms of, from a public point of view, following what metric was being tripped, when, by what data source, and to what cause and effect. And for, for parents that are trying to follow this day-to-day, it was nerve-wracking, to be honest. That's what I heard. It was nerve-wracking for me. And I think it was, you know, it was complicated, I think, by variables outside of our control, outside of your control, and that we, you were faithfully executing metrics that were tentative, but had not yet been part of the agreement you could speak to fully openly. There were also multiple news reports, not all of which were a hundred percent accurate. There were some posts on social media, not all of which were a hundred percent accurate. And in a fast-moving situation like that, you get multiple sources of information. So now that, now that we're, at this point, we have the agreement, the metric is, is what it is. In, for the future occurrences, I, my, my feeling is that we need a single source of truth for this metric, which is slightly hard to complicate, right? It's twenty-eight new cases per week, per hundred thousand, using seven-day rolling average in Hampshire Franklin and Hampton Counties, with a weighting of point eight for Hampton, or point one for Franklin, and point one for Hampton. That isn't something that you can wake up in the morning and calculate yourself, right? And so people will try to calculate it themselves. And I feel like ARPS is, should be the source of that information, of that calculation, and keep it up to date. I know it's probably asking a lot to do that, to do that calculation, to own that and to publish it. I just feel like, if it's not going to be the district, then who, who is it going to be, right? So I don't know how you feel about that.
Yeah, I mean, so I did talk to the APA leadership about that, and we agreed that, you know, looking at that data set on Fridays, seems like it makes sense. We don't want people looking, you know, or obsessing every day like people like me do, and some of, some of their leadership as well, for all for good reasons. But, you know, that if it's predictable and reliable, and something that can be done every Friday, and communicated out in the newsletter, that seems like a reliable source of information. I mean, I think people may want to look for trends. The New York Times is the best way to do that, because it updates overnight, and it gives you the per hundred thousand, you know, seven-day average. You just click over your, the counties. And maybe what I can think about is how do we communicate to families where the data source comes from? So if they choose to obsess and do it every day like I do, then they can. But to have a predictable, reliable Friday, you'll get an update, so that it's not something that people have to worry about on Tuesday night for a Wednesday morning kind of thing. But that, I definitely hear that, and that's, that's good feedback, Peter. Thank you.
Mr. Manino?
What is that weighted average today?
It's a lot over twenty-eight. I did not, I did not look this morning because of where we are, and I was actually not at work today. I had a day, other things I had to do. But we had a big spike towards the end of last week, as I mentioned. And so, since it's a seven-day rolling average, it's hard to, once you have two really high days, which we had two really high days, we had one day that had twenty-two cases last week in Hampshire County. And so until that cycle's out, the numbers are going to look very high, but the last two days have been much more promising than the days prior.
Thank you.
Today and yesterday, I should say, being the last two days, looked much more promising than the days prior.
Ms. Dancer? No? Okay. Uh-oh. Any other questions? Mr. Demling?
Sorry for the repeated questions. It's just that this is, I'm waiting to ask you a few questions about this. So what do you, so what do you think of this idea of excluding the numbers from UMass from the count? I won't go into all the arguments and proposals. I think you saw a few of them in public comment, examples of why it's sensible and reasonable. I understand process-wise what that would mean, but I'm not asking you process-wise. I'm just saying, what do you personally feel about the, the relative sense and appropriateness of doing something like that?
Right, so, so I'm going to have a hard time answering, because it's, that's directly related to a memory and of understanding that was voted on tonight, like, you know, twenty-five minutes ago or something like that. What I would say is, what I'm particularly focused on as it relates to UMass is, as I mentioned before, looking at, is it spreading into the larger community? The evidence to date is that in this particular situation, it has not. There, we don't know what it'll look like a couple of days from now, or a couple of weeks from now. And so I think if we continue to see sustained evidence that cases at UMass are not influencing or affecting the larger town or county community, then I think it's, it's a really valuable conversation to have. But I think, to a certain extent, the jury's a little bit out on that, because we'd want to see that over a longer time period. I had not seen that before tonight, in fairness, like, you know, not fairness to me, but it just, like, to encander. It's an interesting concept, but from the beginning, when this UMass thing started toward the beginning of last week, that's been my intentional focus. Not that I don't Not that I don't care about UMass students having COVID, or don't think they can be affected. I know that they can and will. But for me, it's about what is the contagion? And does it, how does it affect folks who are more typically connecting with our students and our families? So that's, that's sort of my answer to your question. Hopefully that's sufficient for now.
Ms. Dancer?
So, Dr. Morris, when you said something about looking at the numbers on Friday, does that mean on Friday you would decide whether the data supports starting on Monday? And if it does, does that mean we would then go a full week until the next Friday?
The idea is that we wouldn't be making this decision seven days a week, based on data, that if it, you know, that we would try to look at it once a week. And that way, it'd be predictable and reliable, where people could get information instead of going to sleep one night and not knowing what's going to happen the next day. Both, and I want to compliment the APA president, who talked to me about this, just Friday seemed like it made sense that if there is numbers that indicate that we cannot return to school, that we, we then give people the three-day week, you know, three days before that turnaround instead of during the week, which would, would be really more abrupt, if that makes sense.
I guess I'm still not sure. So when the decision is made, then, to go back, for example, is it going to be based on day by day, or is it going to be for a week from when you've decided to go back?
So we're going to try to, we're going to try to track it so that decisions are made the Friday before a Monday. You know, I think when we go back this time, it's slated to be a Thursday, so that, that's going to be a little far off. So we may have to revisit that in this particular situation. But this was more thinking, when we're back in school, when do we make decisions if we have to? Because numbers trip a temporary closure to make those decisions on a Friday, so that it gives the weekend, so people aren't hearing about a decision on 5 o'clock on a Tuesday, and then making different plans for the Wednesday. It affords a little more cushion between decision and impact.
I think, before I go to Mr. Demling, I think it might be helpful for folks watching at home or seeing this later, to explain what we mean by sort of the, and I'm going to get the acronym wrong, the J, JLMSC, JLMSC, and sort of how that process works. Because as my, we just voted, it's not a decision-making body, it's a recommending body. It's a review and recommending body.
Right, so, yep, that's absolutely right. So the data would be reviewed by a subset of the APEA, of our bargaining unit, who are focused on this topic, and that we would meet on Friday, is to review data that would inform decisions for the next week. But it's, it's a, it's a body that makes recommendations, it's not a decision-making, the body has no decision-making authority.
Mr. Demling, did you have another?
I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
No, 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 you're good. I just want to say I have one more non-COVID-related update, but I see there's another question, my apologies.
Mr. Demling?
Yeah, so two questions. So this, over the course of the week, and then this Friday moment. So my first question is, so what happens if, if the number of cases, according to the metric, barely trips 28 over the early part of the week, and then by Friday, it's back down? According to, so I, according to their agreement, is there an automatic school closure of two weeks? That's my first question. My second question is, so you mentioned decision-making, like, six or seven times, with regards to this automatic trigger, and I'm confused. So if it gets, you know, if you're on a Friday and you're at 27, there's no decision, right? And similarly, if you're at 29, there's no decision. So I'm, I'm a little confused about what the decision-making process is.
No, you're, that's a fair critique, you know, that, that it's, it's decisions in the data, it's not made by, oh, well, it's not really 29, the data's the data. So you're spot on on that one, Peter. The idea is that we would look at it on Fridays and have that data determine the implications for the next week. That we would try to stay away from looking at day by day, well, it's 27.9, it's 28.1 on Tuesday, goes down to 28. Like, you know, there's some, I think, rationality that we felt like of looking at the data on Fridays and making decisions for the next week, unless there was some catastrophic situation that we were conscious of. So, so I, you know, I don't know how to say this more clearly, and perhaps I'm just a little tired today, I apologize. But on Fridays, a group gets together, and the data, the data is looked at, and the data determines whether in-person schooling is happening for the next week, and that'll be communicated on Friday afternoons. I don't know if that helps clarify or more confuses.
Not seeing more raised hands at this point.
Sure. So my other update is that, oh, I'm sorry, there is one.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Dancer?
So to go back to Mr. Demling's question, this is a rolling seven-day average, is that correct?
Yes.
That you're saying that? So if the number was triggered on, say, Monday, and then you're, you know, you've gone over at some point in that week, does that mean that on Friday, now you're using the seven-day rolling average? So you would be over, it would trigger the closure?
Sure. So on Friday afternoons, a group gets together, we look at what the data is on Friday, and what the data is on Friday determines what happens the next week.
And could I clarify? The data is the rolling average for every day in that previous seven days?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, sorry, I wasn't clear. My last point is just that I was happy to be invited back to be on RyAC, the Racial Unbalance Advisory Committee, for another three, my three-year term was up. And, but Karis and Bill, who are the co-chairs of it, asked if I would continue on, and I'd be pleased to do that. So our first meeting is actually a week from today. And I'd be happy to share, the main focus is diversifying the teacher force. It seems like Commissioner O'Reilly has given a charge to RyAC to be working on that. Certainly something we've talked a lot about here and track, and so I can certainly fill the committee in on the work of RyAC as it moves forward. But just wanted to pass that along to you all as well. And that's the end of my update.
Any more questions? No? Good. Okay. The next item on our agenda is Chair's Update. I don't have an update at this time. Chair Hall, do you have an update for Pelham?
I don't, thank you.
School Committee Announcements is next. Are there any announcements from any school committee members? Not seeing any. And maybe we'll catch up some of the time that we got behind. Great, so we're moving on now to new and continuing business. And our first item here is reviewing our, our second reading of the policy that we reviewed a week ago. This is Policy ACAB that will replace Policies GBAA, Sexual Harassment in the Workplace, and Policy JICK, Sexual Harassment of Students. And I should say, the new policy ACAB is sexual harassment. And as a reminder for folks that may not have, either don't remember or weren't paying, or weren't watching last week, this policy update is due to changes in Title IX Guidance and Regulations on Discrimination Against, on the Basis of Gender. And the wording is very substantially different, or replace, replace of our current, so that's why we're proposing just a whole replacement of our two current policies. If you look at the document, I'm trying to get to the page, I can't. There was one change from what we reviewed last week, that's highlighted in green. We changed his or her to their.
So I had two things I thought maybe we wanted to think about adding. So under the, let me, let me tell you about the second one first, because I know where that one is. So under B, Supportive Measures, number six, it talks about physical health and safety. I didn't know if we wanted to also add something about mental health. And then let me try to pull up the other one, because I don't know, I didn't write down enough of where it is.
Can you explain where you're, where you wanted that changed, that, I can't see?
Yep, give me one second, I'm trying to pull it up, so I can be more articulate.
Okay. Is it Section 1B or 2B?
Two, under Procedures, and then B, Supportive Measures. It's the next-to-last bullet point, determine whether an immediate threat to the physical health or safety of a student, and blah, 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 blah. But something also adding, mental health, sorry. Adding someone's mental health, immediate to their mental health. And then the other thing, under, oh goodness, Part 1, Section C, the rules, and then Examples of Sexual Harassment. And the last bullet point, the Examples of Sexual Harassment on that, that page, says sending offensive or discriminatory messages through electronic communications, examples, electronic mail, voicemail, and text.
So add text, text in the EG?
Yeah. Thank you.
I think those make sense. Any other questions on this? Comments? So I, I'll actually make the motion, because I think the motion needs to include that we're actually, that we're rescinding the, the other two policies as, at the same time that we're approving this policy. So I move that, and this is for the region right now, I move that the region rescind Policies GBAA, Sexual Harassment in the Workplace, and Policy JICK, Sexual Harassment for Students, and replace those policies with the new policy ACAB, Sexual Harassment, as amended. Moved by McDonald, seconded by Spitzer. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote of the region. Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Ms. Kenny?
Kenny, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Seager?
Seager, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
Ms. Dancer?
Dancer, aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Sullivan, aye.
And McDonald, aye. The motion passes eight to zero. Does, would the Pelham Committee like to approve as well?
Sure, I'll, I'll make that same motion to rescind Policy GBAA, Sexual Harassment in the Workplace, and Policy JICK, Sexual Harassment of Students, and replace it with Policy ACAB as amended. All right, moved by Hall, seconded by Kenny, and we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Kenny?
Kenny, aye.
Did, sorry, Sarah Best, did you, I don't know if that was me or you, but one of us went out for a second. Did you just vote?
I did, yes, Kenny, aye.
Great, thanks. We'll just count that as the one vote. Mr. Manino?
Manino, aye.
And Ms. Dancer?
Dancer, aye.
And Hall, aye.
And I will make a motion for the Amherst School Committee. I move that we rescind Policy GBAA, Sexual Harassment in the Workplace, and Policy JICK, Sexual Harassment Against Students, and replace those policies with new policy ACAB, Sexual Harassment, as amended. Second? Moved by McDonald, and seconded by Spitzer, and we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
And McDonald, aye. And that motion passes four to zero. Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to the next order of business, which is reviewing and potentially voting on our school committee goals, guidance, or priorities for the 2021 school year. And it's similar to, with the policy, amendments to what we reviewed last week are marked, are highlighted in green. And so if you look on the page that begins, I think it's page three, under Early Education, we added Maintaining, so maintaining and increasing access to early childhood education for Amherst children. And then the next bullet was a more substantial change, sort of reworked that to reflect the discussion that we had last week about reflecting on the changes, all the changes that are being made as a, in times of COVID, and reflecting on what we may want to carry forward in, beyond COVID. So that one reads now, "School Year 21, 22, and Beyond, lead discussion with the school committees and broader community to reflect on learnings and impact of changes made due to COVID-19, and consider the feasibility and practicality of retaining some changes, including later start times in the region for the 2021, 22 school year." Further down that page, under well, under Priorities, Values, and Themes, under the Wellness Bullet, we added LGBTQIA+ Inclusion. And under the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion Bullet, we added "Continue Work to Address Education Deficit and Opportunity Gap." And I hope that captured all of the great discussion and ads that we had last week. I will look to others in case there's comments that, that we may have missed anything, or now seeing it all put back together again. Are there new thoughts on this? Mr. Demling?
Yeah, so I really like the rephrasing of that School Year 2021, 2022, and Beyond. Yeah, so I really like the rephrasing of that school year 2021, 2022, and beyond bullet. I think it captures a lot of what we were talking about last week. The one suggestion I would have for that, this is actually in response to some recent public feedback we've we've gotten, is to change retaining some to minor or major, so that the sentence would read. Reflect on learnings, impact of changes made due to COVID-19, and consider the feasibility and practicality of major or minor changes, including, you could even drop the later start times phrase if you wanted, but but the the point here being is that I want to kind of broaden the scope a little bit, not just because I like to give the superintendent more more work to do, but because I feel like there's two things here. One is that there are components of of what we're doing now, which which we may want to carry forward during quote unquote, normal times, right? And so later start time is a is a good example of one of those sort of aspects. The other half of this, though, is that, you know, to whatever degree returning to normal means, I think it's become pretty clear that there isn't going to be some really clear hard stop in which COVID is wiped off the face of the earth anytime soon. And I think I think it's also pretty clear that we don't have certainty about what the state of COVID is going to be for the 2021, 2022 school year, right? Like, we all hope for vaccines coming soon and that everybody takes those and all that, but there's so many variables to this that that we can't say for certain. We live in a community where thousands of people come from all across the country every year and gather at the university and whatnot. And so so we don't know to what degree students are going to be needing to wear masks or socially distanced or whatnot. And so we may want to, and again, I'm reflecting, this is my original thought, reflecting some recent public feedback received, we may want to think really out of the box about what the next school year looks like. If 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 we're really trying to follow the guidelines that we set a few months ago, which is maximize in-person learning for all of our students. And so if we're serious about that, you know, what what kind of major things might we want to consider for next school year is, would a radical reworking of the calendar, for example, that would get us more feasible days outdoors be be something we want to consider in order to maximize in-person learning for students, you know, that would then have, say, a much longer break during the winter? I could go on, but the general point that was shared with us that I think is worth exploring is, you know, we obviously want to keep on trying everything we can do to maximize in-person learning for our students this year, for all of our students. But given the unpredictability of COVID, we may need some out of the box ideas, and sooner rather than later. I think the other point of the public feedback we received is, if these are going to be major changes, we need to start thinking about them like kind of nowish and engaging our collaborators as well. So that's just a minor word change, but trying to interject a whole nother concept.
Ms. Spitzer, you had your hand up. And then Mr. Manino.
I'd be in favor of that taking out the retaining, because I think using the word retaining changes kind of suggests that there aren't additional changes that we might want to make in light of everything that's gone on. So I think that the idea of having the reflection period where retaining or introducing new changes that might might be better suited to our goals.
Mr. Manino.
I support Mr. Demling's edit.
So I scribbled it on here on my screen, say, and consider the feasibility and practicality of major and minor changes, including later start times region. Is that? Practicality, major and minor changes, okay. I like that. Any other? Any other discussion on that or any other ideas? Ms. Kenny? And then Ms. Seeger.
I just have a quick question, just a clarifying question. So under diversity, equity, and inclusion, that last chunk, support RJ implementation across districts, restorative justice?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Ms. Seeger.
I was thinking, I'm not quite sure if this belongs here or not, but there was a comment you received, it was not public comment, but it was about the the following school year, so 21, 22, during COVID times, and it was about thinking outside the box in terms of when the school year actually is and capitalizing on the warmer parts of the year, namely during the summer. I don't know if that should be wrapped into something like this, but I do feel like it's something somehow we should think about across the course of this year. So specifically being a superintendent's goal, I don't know. But I thought I'd bring that up now and maybe that is a conversation for a later date.
I think that was the intent of the major and minor changes without specifically naming that particular. Yeah, about the calendar, but sort of just opening that up to, are there, I think as Ms. Spitzer phrased it, are there other ideas that that we might want to do that we're not doing right now, that we haven't already thought of? At least that's how I interpret that, major and minor changes. Mr. Demling.
Yeah, that was exactly the intent. And actually, for practical purposes, given that this is a really a communications document from the school committee superintendent, it's more important to me that the superintendent understands what we're talking about here than, you know, when the superintendent comes back to us and says, okay, here's the goals I propose. If it's not called out as specifically a goal, and yet Dr. Morris understands that, hey, this has kind of caught our caught our attention as something that we ought to be, you know, checking out, and we kind of expect you to lead the exploration of in the nearest term, that's good enough for me, right? It's like, it's more of a, it's more of a, at least that's my point of view, you know, from a from the sense. And I'll talk to Morris if that's too ambiguous for you to work with.
No, I mean, I think, to me, that that sounds about right for a guidance document. And as you all know, the calendar actually needs to be voted by you. It's not something that is done independently by superintendents. And certainly, if in the next month, the committee wants me to engage in dialogue with the bargaining units on this topic, that's something that, because our existing contract, not the MOA that was voted tonight, but our existing contract has language around the contracts, you know, that that's something that I think makes good sense to explore. I'd be happy to do that. So but I understand the intent, and I think the grain size seems appropriate from my perspective.
And I should have said this at the start of this conversation, because I know that at least one committee member has asked that. And so for, again, for community members that may just be tuning in, this this is goals, guidance document. So this isn't necessarily the goals that we've listed initiatives of projects that sort of lays out our guiding principles and sort of why we're trying to collaborate across our three districts on setting and working on goals for this year. And what this document does, and by our vote on this, we're suggesting that to Dr. Morris that these are things that we expect to be him to include in some fashion, or at least address in his proposed goals when we get for the year, when we get to that point next. And so these are not the superintendent goals. These are our guidance and sort of our expectations of what we'd like to see and work on within the goals. Any other? I think we've covered all of the changes since last week, yeah. So any other thoughts? No. So with that additional change that Mr. Demling proposed, are we ready to take? Would somebody from the region like to make a motion?
I move that the regional school committee approve the priorities for the 2020, 2021 school year as amended.
Is there a second?
Well, second.
Moved by Spitzer, seconded by Seeger. Sorry, I had a, I had a crunch on the on the school year dates. So we'll move to a roll call vote. Mr. Demling.
Demling, aye.
Ms. Kenny.
Kenny, aye.
Ms. Lord.
Lord, aye.
Ms. Seeger.
Seeger, aye.
Ms. Spitzer. Spitzer, aye. Ms. Dancer.
Dancer, aye.
Mr. Sullivan.
Sullivan, aye.
And McDonald, aye. Motion passes eight to zero. Chair Hall, would you like to?
Sure, I'll move for Pelham that we approve the 2020, 2021 priorities as amended.
Second.
Seconded by Manino. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Dancer. Oh, can you do a thumbs up? Oh, wait, no, I can hear you.
Dancer, aye.
Great, Mr. Manino.
Manino, aye.
Ms. Kenny.
Kenny, aye.
And Hall, aye.
And I will, for the Amherst School Committee, I will move that we approve the 2021, 20, 2020, 2021 priorities and goals guidance for the Amherst School Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by McDonald, seconded by Demling. Roll call vote, Mr. Demling.
Demling, aye.
Ms. Lord.
Lord, aye.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer, aye.
McDonald, aye. So that motion passes the Amherst School Committee four to zero. Thank you. So our next item is a discussion on advocacy for around minimum local contribution and hold harmless. And there is a joint resolution in our packets. And I might ask Mr. Demling if he'd like to introduce this topic.
Sure, so this was, this is an item that was brought to our attention, our committee's attention, our town's attention by Senator Comerford. And in a nutshell, as part of the Student Opportunity Act, which which overhauled some major but not all aspects of state education funding last year, there was a study that Senator Comerford was, was part of helping get going to look at minimum local contribution for for town. Basically, what what should the town kick in and what should the state cover in the in the funding of a school district? And so this is, this is a study for, it's a much bigger topic than is covered in this resolution, and there are many aspects of this that ought to be corrected and improved and made more equitable. One of them is this concept of hold harmless aid, which is essentially, you should get at least as much state aid in a current year as you did the previous year. And it makes, it makes a lot of sense for for a number of reasons, and that your your fixed costs tend not to go down, in fact, they tend to go up, even if your enrollment is going down. Unfortunately, there is a business group that is has put together quite a strong document and recommending the phasing out of hold harmless aid. And I'm really trying to think of words that would be exaggerate this, but I don't think there are, given the devastation that losing hold harmless aid would would absolutely cause to our districts. I don't think it's an exaggeration to say that the the push to phase out hold harmless is probably the biggest existential threat to our public schools that I've I've ever seen. And that that includes charter school funding and includes includes other things that we've advocated about. I mean, we're talking about a 14% cut, many millions of dollars, which would have a dramatic reduction in staffing levels and class sizes and specials and our ability to support special education students and the arts and ELL and low income families and everything that you possibly care about in schools. And so I appreciate Senator Comerford raising this alarm. We're also very fortunate that the Town of Amherst Finance Director, Sean Mangano, used to be the ARPS Finance Director, so he knows exactly what he's talking about here, and he wrote a really good memo outlining a number of issues that we should be focused on, including hold harmless. And so Ms. McDonald and I worked with a couple members of the town council over the weekend to put together a draft resolution that town council passed unanimously last night. So basically, what this is saying, what's happening is that until December 16th, so for the next 10 days, any member of the public, so this includes school committees, but also any member of the public can provide input to the survey about how the minimum local contribution should be changed or or made better. And so defending hold harmless is number one with a bullet. And it is truly awful timing, I will say, for an advocacy issue of this level of import to come to our desk. To be going this long, this hard, this frequently since March about COVID, and then have this thing fall from the sky. It's just, it's, it's, it's so 2020, you know? But but we really need to do all we can in the next 10 days to get as much activity and pushback on this as possible. So it's probably more than we can talk about tonight, but, you know, getting, getting town councils and school committee members and other members of the public, just getting the word out in the next 10 days to get input on this survey, I think is going to be really, really important. That's, that's as short as I can make this complicated topic for an intro.
Ms. Seeger.
I'm just curious, because I don't fully understand the full cycle of how this affects us in terms of, does this affect the chapter 70 money that would come to the towns in our district? Is that how the formulas affect things, or is it more on the local contribution and whether or not that goes up or down?
Mr. Dem.
Yeah, so it is, it's part of the state aid. I don't think technically it's it's called chapter 70, though I could be wrong about that. But it's basically this this other bucket of aid that comes from the state that says, we're going to run your foundation budget, oh, it looks like based on your enrollment that you should receive X dollars, which is less than last year, but we're not going to penalize you for that. We understand that you don't save money, this economy of scale business, right? And so we're going to give you this extra hold harmless aid. You know, now, to be fair, there are some, there are some cases of very wealthy communities that benefit from hold harmless aid, and this is kind of like the foot in the door that these these business communities use, is that they'll cherry pick a few exceptions in cases of where there are some communities benefiting from one from one of parts of the state of state aid and say, oh, well, therefore, we should blow it away for everybody, right? And so it's, and it's a classic central and Western Mass issue, right? Where it affects our districts more to a greater degree than it does Eastern Mass, because we have more declining enrollment districts, we have more rural districts, we we're more affected by the unfunded mandates of regional transportation and whatnot. And yet we have less representation at the state, right? So it's like, this is one of those things where we all have to band together and go, ah, which thankfully Senator Comerford is trying to get us to do. But, yeah, but the short answer to your question is, yeah, it's a reduction in stating.
Dr. Morris.
Yeah, so it does reduce, it would have the effect of reducing chapter 70, because chapter 70 is built with some assumptions. And one of them is that there's this whole harmless thing, and it certainly would affect for for those of you who are representing committees in Chutesboro and Leverett. I only know this because the minimum contribution affects the regional contribution. So I'm not trying to get and take Superintendent Colkeen's place in any way, shape, or form, but actually, it has huge impacts on the regional budget. We saw this in the last two years, where there would be a change in the minimum contribution amount. That being said, Leverett and Chutesbury go way over the minimum contribution amount, so it's all in essence theoretical, unless you're part of a regional district, which we happen to be. But it would affect any district that's spending, as Chutesboro and Leverett are well over the kind of what would be, the state would define a minimum contribution that it should. So it would have large impacts on many districts, including all the districts that anyone on this, in this meeting represents. Once that would be taken away, it would really shift more of the load onto local districts. And we all know that everyone, every town that's represented by the region is very close to a tax cap and couldn't handle, to Mr. Demling's earlier point, the scale of the impact would be enormous. It's nothing that would be possible to be absorbed by town governments, nothing close to it.
Any other? Any questions? Any questions? So this is, we'd like this to be a joint resolution of the three committees in concert with the Amherst Town Council that as Mr. Demling indicated, they voted unanimously to approve, endorse this resolution. And Ms. Spitzer?
Happy to make a motion. I move that the region approve this joint resolution to hold harm- that hold harmless aid is essential and equitable.
I second that. Moved by Spitzer, second by McDonald. We'll take a roll call vote. But is there any further discussion before we vote? Seeing none. Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Ms. Kenny?
Kenny, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Seeger?
Seeger, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
Ms. Dancer?
Dancer, aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Sullivan, aye.
And McDonald, aye. And the motion passes unanimously eight to zero. I'll make a similar motion for the Amherst School Committee that we approve the joint resolution to, that hold harmless aid is essential and equitable. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by McDonald, second by Spitzer. Move to a roll call vote. Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Ms., Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
And McDonald, aye. The motion passes unanimously four to zero. Chair Hall?
All right, would someone from Pelham like to make a motion on the joint resolution? Yes, Margaret?
I move that the Pelham School Committee endorse the joint resolution, hold harmless aid is essential and equitable.
All right, I will second that. We'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Kenny?
Kenny, aye.
Mr. Manino?
Manino, aye.
Ms. Dancer?
Dancer, aye.
And Hall, aye.
Great. And so for those that weren't online yet when we discussed the agenda change, we are moving the next item, which is Item D, to later on in the agenda. And we are moving, so we'll progress into the warrant report and gifts. And then Item 19, adjourning the Pelham School Committee, would be next after that. And then we'll come back to Item 14D at that point, once Pelham has adjourned. So warrants, does Ms. Spitzer and Ms. Hall want?
Oh, sorry. Can I just explain for the Pelham folks who are getting on why we're doing that? So that, that last item did not make it onto, it was amended on the agenda, didn't make it on the Pelham agenda in time. So we can take that up, we would just have to do it separately, but it wasn't posted in Pelham, which is why we're not discussing it. Okay, sorry. Thank you.
Thanks.
I don't have any warrants to report for the region.
Ms. Hall?
And no, I don't have any for Pelham tonight.
I have one that is an amended warrant. Sorry, just, of course my computer is freezing. Okay. So this is an amended warrant from just a week ago. I, Allison McDonald, authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of $699,210.17 for the warrant dated September 25th, 2020. This includes general fund expenses of $456,686.86, revolving fund expenses of $10,522.33, grant fund expenses of $8,103.47, FEMA funds of $142,993.17, CARES Fund, CARES Act Fund, $80,000, sorry, $80,990.34. And I signed that amended version on October 3rd. And we have some gifts, and each district has gifts tonight. So beginning in the packet, we have gifts for the Amherst School Committee. Ms. Lord, would you like to make a motion about, for our gifts?
Yes. I move that we accept the gifts. I don't have them in front of me. Do I need to name them?
And Ms. Spitzer?
I have them in front of me. I'm happy to, to make the motion.
Thank you.
Can I just, sorry, Ms. Lord. Still this opportunity from you. But what does CR stand for? Does anybody know? There are several.
No, I won't. Yeah, I wonder if that was a typo for CF?
Like Crocker Farm and-
Yeah, Dr. Morris is nodding loudly, so.
So I will, I can't see that, so I will, I will read it with that substitution. Okay. So I move that the Amherst School Committee accept the following gifts from Martha Oliver, number 995763, to support Crocker Farm at the principal's discretion in the amount of $10. Also from Martha Oliver, number 995785, to support Crocker Farm at the principal's discretion in the amount of $10. From Martha Oliver, number 995808, to support Crocker Farm at the principal's discretion in the amount of $10. From Martha Oliver, number 995831, to support Crocker Farm at the principal's discretion in the amount of $10. From the Thursday Club of South Amherst, number 305, to support Crocker Farm at the principal's discretion in the amount of $200 for a total of $240. In addition, I would like to acknowledge the following grants from the Amherst Education Foundation Incorporated, number 1618, to support the garden program, sustainable expansion for Crocker Farm, Fort River, and Wildwood in the amount of $8,450. From the Amherst Education Foundation Incorporated, to support the, for the grant-making history, critical thinking skills, and engagement in social studies at Crocker Farm, Fort River, and Wildwood in the amount of $5,100. Also from the Amherst Education Foundation, a grant to support the Crocker Farm meters theater curriculum library in the amount of $5,745 for a total of $19,295 in grants. Thank you.
I'll second that. Any, any discussion? Seeing none. We'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
And McDonald, aye. And the motion passes unanimously four to zero. Chair Hall?
Okay, can I just ask a question on this first? Is this just, is this a changed gift that they, I remember seeing this previously just for the region? Is this that they just added Pelham to it?
Dr. Morris?
So since the, the gift was across all three districts, it, my understanding is, I think you're right. It was accepted by the region and Amherst, but not accepted by Pelham yet. So it would be just Pelham's portion of the gift because that hasn't yet been voted by this particular committee.
Got it. Okay, not complaining. I just-
No, no.
Okay, would someone from Pelham like to make a motion? All right, I can do it. I move that we accept the donation from A.M. Lithography and Packaging Corporation for 55,800 base shields with an estimated value of $111,600. Is there a second?
Second.
Great. All right, we'll call vote. Ms. Dancer?
Dancer, aye.
Mr. Manino?
Manino, aye.
Ms. Kenny?
Kenny, aye.
And Hall, aye. Thank you.
So I'll make the motion for the region to accept the following gifts from Anonymous to support athletics volleyball. Sorry, I move to accept the following gifts for the Regional School Committee. From Anonymous to support athletics volleyball, purchase of two outdoor nets and maintenance of courts, an estimated value of $1,200. In addition, to accept the following grants from Amherst Education Foundation, Inc., number 1618, the grant to support climate change carnival, data is real, so are the solutions for arms, in the amount of $4,050. And also from Amherst Education Foundation, Inc., number 1618, the grant for Logic Pro X for music production at, at ARHS in the amount of $3,500 for a total of $7,550. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by, was that Kenny first? Kenny, okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Ms. Kenny?
Kenny, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Seeger?
Seeger, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
Ms. Dancer?
Dancer, aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Sullivan, aye.
And McDonald, aye. The motion passes unanimously eight to zero. So Chair Hall, I'll turn it back over to you to adjourn.
All right, I will take a motion to adjourn Pelham.
Move that we adjourn the Pelham School Committee?
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, moved by Dancer, seconded by Manino. We'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Dancer?
Dancer, aye.
Mr. Manino?
Manino, aye.
Ms. Kenny?
Kenny, aye.
And Hall, aye. Pelham is adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night. Okay, so for the region and Amherst, we'll move on to the next item, which is a letter to UMass Amherst, a discussion impossible vote. That letter is included in our packets. And I'm going to ask Mr. Demling to introduce this topic.
Sure, I know it's late too, so I'll try to keep this snappy. So, so thanks. So this is basically a, a letter that I wanted to put forward for the committee's consideration. Essentially, you know, in response to recent events at UMass and in a, in the context of our overall goal, how do we maximize in-person learning for our students? And it boils down to a request to ask the chancellor to consider updating the community agreement to clearly communicate and consistently apply disciplinary consequences for student violations of the agreement, including suspension and expulsion, depending on the circumstance and egregiousness of the action. That's, that's essentially the request. And, you know, I mean, for the public, I, I want to be clear, this, this is not meant to be anti-UMass. I sincerely appreciate the fact that we live in a university town. We wouldn't have the high-quality public schools that we do if were it not for the university's impact on our economy and our town's ability to support our schools. And nor would we have the culture of, of education and learning that so many of us move here for. And this is also not anti-student, you know, I'm, I'm very grateful to the vast majority of students who are dutifully following the mask distancing and, and social gathering guidelines. But, you know, the, the recent events demonstrate that it's only a very small number of individual actions can have serious consequences, you know, leading directly to the automatic two-week closure of our schools. And so, you know, we want to make sure that the town and UMass, the school committee is doing everything we can to minimize that going forward. And, you know, I do appreciate the, the many different efforts the university is engaged in. But I, I think what has become clear, at least for me, is that, that those very positive aspects of education and encouragement alone are not sufficient. And when you look at their peers, it's clear that there is more that could be done that the university is, is not doing in terms of setting clear expectations. You know, one of the examples is anyone who attends or hosts an unsafe gathering, you know, without masks or distancing, either on or off campus can expect suspension. And that's an example from, from Northeastern. There's also other examples from MIT, Harvard, BU, Tufts that are referenced here. And I don't see that as, as, as negative, that, that's, that it's a clear cause and effect policy that I think, I think is appropriate given, given COVID. So, you know, again, I, I feel like it's, in the same way that masks and distancing and air quality are sort of layers of protection for COVID, I feel like an effective implementation of a policy also has to have these layers. And UMass has a lot of them, but, but, but they don't have this one. And I feel like, given that we now have a, a structure where, where any, any small outbreak at UMass is going to have serious repercussions for our schools, we need to at least ask the chancellor to consider expanding what they're currently doing. So that's what the intent of this letter is.
Thank you. That always sounds. One of the things that I really appreciated in this, in this draft was the reference to all of the other schools' policies and sort of just pointing out that, that so many other schools in, in our region, when that, this region, but sort of closer to Boston, are, have these kinds of policies, and that was really helpful. I think the other thing for me on this is I, I hear concern about, about shaming or being too, too strong or stringent in disciplinary actions in students. And, and I think for me, we don't, we don't give the same sort of buy or pass to students when it comes to alcohol and driving or sexual assault and harassment. We, we hold students to really high standards, the same high standards that we hold all of the, all of ourselves to. And we don't, we don't sort of give them sort of leeway on that. And I think what we're asking here is we, students are adults. They're not, they're not 25-year-old adults or 35-year-old adults. I understand that. But we, we, I think, holding them to the same expectations that we're holding the rest of our community and demonstrating that there are consequences when, when that, when they don't uphold the, the behaviors that we need all of us to be holding true to keep the virus in check is, is really important. I also see that our town can also do more in terms of enforcing, enforcing our, the behavior changes that we need to see to hold the virus in check. And so with that in mind, I did, some of you know this, I did speak out and publicly comment at our town council meeting last night asking for strong, to actually enforce the policies that are already in place. We have policies for mask-wearing in downtown in, in Amherst that have actually stiff penalties for repeated offenses. And so asking that we actually hold to that, and also the, the gathering max size. I wasn't aware that the, the Case Zero or the super-spreader event was actually only eight people. That's sobering, I think. But we do have gathering size limits that all of the rest of the community is being held to. And so asking that the town do its part also to help, to help enforce these. So I think asking both the town and the university to help us control the virus spread so that we can get our vulnerable- so that we can get our vulnerable students back into our school buildings, I think is really an important step that we can take. Ms. Seeger?
I'm a little mixed about this. Not because I support anything that has happened recently, obviously from this students' gathering and whatnot. I was very sad and upset with what happened last week. One of the thoughts I have on this, I was talking to a fellow parent the other day and someone who works at the university. And they said that, you know, if you start to punish students, you start to lose contact tracing. Like, who's going to admit that they went to that party just so they could get potentially suspended? So I can see from the university's point of view why this might be a difficult thing to do. And so it makes me just, knowing that puts me in a weird spot of, yeah, I certainly don't want students gathering and doing these unsafe things and then spreading it into our community, while at the same time I can realize that the college, the university's going to have a hard time doing things if it shuts down their channel of communication, figuring out where these potential cases might be. So I just wanted to mention that.
Ms. Spitzer?
Yeah, I'm also feeling very torn about this because I do strongly want to encourage students to do the right thing. I think it's, it was the one kind of minor edit to the letter would be that we say state universities, and it gets confusing because it sounds like it's other state universities, like University of Connecticut or university of, you know, public institutions. So I think I would clarify it to say, like, universities within our state or within the Commonwealth. I don't know how you want to phrase it. But I really want to echo Ms. Seeger's concern about having this kind of big hammer and the potential for it to kind of backfire and have these unintended consequences. I think enforcing what's currently on the books would be strong. I was trying to think through when this was happening, you know, ways that we could communicate to the students directly how their actions are having a negative impact on us. I also believe that, you know, we want to think about how we would address this if it were our high school students or something. Would we think it's appropriate to suspend or expel our high school students from, you know, if they engaged in a social gathering or, you know, that was greater than instant. What's the restored justice framework that we would use for something like this? I'm not, I don't have the answers to this, but I guess this is the thing that's making me kind of anxious about suggesting that a university adopt a policy that maybe we wouldn't adopt for our own students. And I don't know, actually, I mean, Dr. Morris, maybe you have, could clarify what our policy would be if somebody was in a gathering of 10 or more. Would we carry out a similar policy? And we have different rules and regulations. But anyway, I just wanted to put this out. It's really late. So the other thing I wanted to bring is that I also noticed on learned online, and I don't have the details on this, but that the university's agreed to help us by testing some of Amherst's first responders. And, you know, when I first saw that, I thought that, oh, that's wonderful and, you know, potential for recognizing that in this letter. Or are there other things that maybe we could ask for rather than a strengthening of a policy that might move us closer towards our goal of reducing community transmission? So those are my thoughts on this letter. Thank you, Peter, for putting it together and starting the conversation.
I just want to say, with all due respect, I don't think that comparing this to what we might do with our own students is appropriate. We're talking about adults that are older than 18. And that's a very different population than what we have in our schools. And that's not to say that there's reasons to think of different consequences for a university student versus, you know, a 26-year-old that happens to live in town. That's not my point. And I don't think the comparison point should be our own students in our own schools because it's a very different dynamic. And the law recognizes differences between 18-year-olds and 14-year-olds. So. Dr. Morris?
Yeah. So, I mean, I think the other difference for me in response to Ms. Spitzer's question is that we can control the consequences we would give for students who attend our district. I think what's a little unique here is that we don't have any capacity to control what happens for students or adults who are outside the ARPS network for what happens. I mean, there's been some high-profile cases in the eastern part of the state of high school students who did similar behaviors as to what's being described here. And there were consequences, actually, for all as well as individual consequences for those students. So, you know, it's hard, you know, I can't quite get the analogy to work. What I will say is this is having a huge impact on our kids and our families and our staff members. And so I don't pretend to be an expert in exactly the strategies at a university level. This did come up in the conversation that I had on Monday at, you know, with state folks. We didn't go into great detail because, you know, it didn't seem like the right moment to do that. But I am happy to fully endorse any strategy that promotes our students going in-person as the key priority. I think, you know, there's been some points raised that are really good points about, is that an effective strategy? Or will it actually reduce health? Like, you know, I don't pretend to be an expert on that particular area, but it is having an enormous impact on our children, an enormous impact on our families. And if it doesn't stop, I actually worry about it having an enormous impact on our larger community in terms of the town-gown relationship. I think you are aware, or many of you are aware, that there were parents in, you've seen, you know, you haven't gotten all the emails I've gotten. Maybe you get some that I don't. But the extreme level of frustration that our families are facing and our children are facing because of this right now, it actually is having, I worry in the short term about impact on students. I actually worry in the long term about how do we collaborate with the university because of the impact? So, you know, I'm not saying you should or shouldn't endorse this letter, right, that's for you all to determine. But I don't want to under, I don't want to undersell the impact this is having. And I also don't want to undersell the impact that it's going to have long-term because it matters for me that we have maintained a strong relationship with the university. I want to compliment Nancy Biffon in particular for communicating at all hours with me on what's been happening. That being said, if this trend continues, I really do worry about what it means for the community. Sorry for being long-winded on this, but I don't want to, I know the conversation's helpful and maybe I'm saying everything, something everything already agrees with. But I do think it needs to be stated really clearly that the impact is enormous. I'm not blaming the university. I'm not blaming, you know, that's not where I'm coming from. But the reality is that we've got 300 kids who are slated to be in school or in that neighborhood who aren't in school today. And they're not going to be in school tomorrow. They're not going to be in school the rest of this week. And they weren't in school last week. And I don't want to pretend to be overly dramatic, but I do think it is that dramatic for kids and families who are experiencing this. And so if there is an evidence-based or at least a theoretical construct that people believe would change that dynamic, I'm going to endorse it 100% of the time because it is so, the impact is so dramatic. And I think the long-term impact on relationships between the town, the university, and the schools, I'll just speak to the university and the schools at this point, will be affected by this. So I'm in on anything. I'm in on collaboration. I'm in on conversations that need to happen. But I'm also in on anything that experts would believe would promote our students returning in person
Mr. Demling?
Yeah, you know, just briefly, I mean, I do want to acknowledge that there is legitimate concern about the contact tracing impact. From what I've, I searched for and was not able to find any, obviously, the research on this is extremely limited because universities have only been back in a couple of months. You know, the universities, you know, I only pulled, you know, five Boston-area universities. You know, they have not, from what I've discovered, reported a problem with contact tracing. And in terms of what's going on in Amherst, I think what can definitively be said is that the very sincere and diligent efforts of the town and UMass to educate and encourage is not reaching everyone. There are a non-zero number of students, and we saw that it takes less than 10 to cause our schools to close for two weeks, who aren't going to accept education and encouragement. They do not represent the vast majority of students, you know, not an anti-student statement. But I see it in my neighborhood every weekend. Every person I talk to in Amherst says, has an example of a student rental. They walk by with 20 cars on a Saturday night and, you know, kids just violating, violating the agreement openly. And I don't think any amount of ambassador effort, any amount of, you know, COVID-friendly dog, you know, education. Kids know that they need to wear masks and they're choosing not to. And they know that they need to distance and they're choosing not to. A very small number, but that's what's causing this. And so that's where I think that kind of cause and effect comes into. That you're an adult and you're making an agreement to be part of this community and part of this educational community. And then this is part of the agreement. So that's kind of where I come down on that. It is, it's not a perfect science of behavioral encouragement, but I do think it's something that, based on what's going on in our town, is warranted, at least for the chancellor, to consider, which is all this letter really asks him to do.
Are there other thoughts from folks that haven't spoken? Ms. Stanser?
I would support this. I think what Dr. Morris said, I think we've all felt about the last week. And I think that there are a number of people in the community who feel the same way. I think reading about the parents with their kids who drove through the apartment complexes trying to make it understood that they weren't going to be in school because of the behavior of some students, it indicates pretty strong feelings. And I think that we need to support the students and the community in this regard.
Any other thoughts? You know, we're all fading, but don't want to shut the discussion down too quickly. Not seeing any. Are we ready to make a motion? Mr. Demling?
I move to approve the letter to the chancellor of UMass.
I second it.
Moved by Demling and seconded by Stanser. Mr. Demling?
Would you accept, how do I say this? Preliminary advice? A friendly amendment to my own motion? Or can I restate my motion?
Yes.
I move to approve the letter to the chancellor of UMass as with the wording suggestion as amended by Ms. Spitzer. The state university, please.
So we'll take a roll call vote if there's no further discussion. Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
I'm going to abstain.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Seeger?
Seeger, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
Ms. Stanser?
Stanser, aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Sullivan, aye.
And McDonald, aye. The motion passes seven, zero, and one abstained. And now, would somebody from Amherst like to make a motion?
I move to accept the letter to the University of Massachusetts as amended.
I'll second that. Moved by Spitzer, seconded by McDonald. Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
And I'm aye. Motion passes four to zero. And, good. So we've reached the end of our agenda. Would another person from Amherst like to make a motion?
I move to adjourn.
I second that. There's no discussion. Roll call vote. Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
McDonald, aye. The Amherst committee is adjourned. And I'll move that the region adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by McDonald, seconded by, seconded by Stanser, and there's no discussion. Roll call vote. Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Ms. Kenny?
Kenny, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Seeger?
Seeger, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
Ms. Stanser?
Stanser, aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Sullivan, aye.
And McDonald, aye. The region adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Allison.
Thank you, Amherst media.